Okay, call this Village of Green Hills Council Meeting to order for October 28th, 2025. Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Palter?
Here.
Ms. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Walther?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. And Mr. Bonner has excused absent. Okay, we have a prayer by Rachel.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all here safely today. Thank you for the opportunity, Lord, to just preside over the village and this big responsibility that you've entrusted us with. As we get ready to near the end of the month and we're going to have a lot of kids and families out, we just pray for your coverage and your protection and especially with everything going on right now in higher government, just your provision and that you watch over everyone and that you just release your abundance, Lord God, so that people can be provided for and not go hungry, Lord, and that you would give us just spiritual discernment and wisdom so that we can do within our, what's within our power. And we even pray, excuse me, over the upcoming election that year will be done and that yeah, just that year will be done and that we are able to move forward in enthusiasm, Lord, with all that come for this great village. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes of previous council meeting for September 23rd. If there are no corrections, the minutes shall stand as approved?
No corrections.
Okay. All right, we have a public presentations available here and tonight we're honored with Steve Predmore from the Superintendent of Water Divisions for Greater Cincinnati Water Works.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Recently, we've had a rash of water main breaks in the Village of Green Hills and I kind of wanted to just enlighten people on what happened, what we've done to fix that and moving forward, how we're going to prevent that from happening anymore. Green Hills is kind of a unique part of our system. It doesn't really fit into our highest part of the system, which is our Western Hills Division, and it doesn't really fit into our Eastern Hills Division. So, Green Hills is completely regulated. So, what we do is we take the pressure from Western Hills and we reduce it down to make Green Hills, you know, the perfect pressure plane is what we call. With those kinds of things in place, we have to do regular maintenance on the regulators. There was a step missed with the preventative maintenance of the regulators this time. One of the guys who was new, typically we monitor the pressure upstream and downstream to make sure that the pressures are where they need to be. Unfortunately, that was missed this time on the downhill side. So, within an hour and a half of them leaving out there, we started having water main breaks in Green Hills. So, that was a really unfortunate part of that. So, we have changed our processes and put some new steps in place to make sure that never happens again. With that being said, though, the pressure regulators, they can fail. We've seen that in the past where we've gone with certain brands of regulators and they work really well and then all of a sudden they start having different kinds of parts put into them. So, we try and use the best we possibly can to make sure that the pressure is even for Green Hills. I had some questions about how we were moving forward with some of that. I did hand out a handout to you guys with the leaks moving forward. One of the first things that we always try and do when we get a call about a leak is we try and kind of qualify the leak. We'll ask a series of questions. One of the questions we usually ask is how much water are you seeing surface? Is it more or less than a garden hose? That kind of gives us a response time. If it's more than a garden hose, we try and get someone out there within the hour. If not, we try and get out there within 24 hours. This is getting to be our busy time of the year. We start to see leaks creep up. Right now, we have 23 leaks running in our system and that's across 3,200 miles of water main. So, we try and keep that as low as possible. Last year, we did hit a high of 92 leaks in the month of February, which we don't like to have, but we do manage those situations. We do have crews that salt the leaks on a daily basis once it falls below 39 degrees. So, we're working to make sure that we have that in place as well. But one of the biggest things we look for with a water main break is, is it doing damage to property? Is it dangerous to people? And is the systemic pressure able to be maintained? If we can say that those kinds of things, if it's damaged or dangerous and we're not able to maintain pressure, we have to get there right then. Our valve operators are our first responders and we try and get them there as soon as possible. Typically, we have six valve operators on every shift. We are 24/7, 365, and we get out there and try and operate the valves as soon as possible when we see a water main break. We do have in place a system now that through our work water system, it will look to see which valves were shutting and it will send out electronic notification to anyone who is signed up to get those notifications. You can get those notifications by going out to the City of Cincinnati's website and signing up for those notifications. Did you guys have any questions specific to this?
Is there a phone number that you would find at that website?
There is. So, we ask people to call 513-591-7700 and then there'll be a list of different items that you can select from. Any kind of leak or break would go to the emergency line.
It would be worth putting that on our one call so people are aware.
Yeah.
I was kind of speaking before the meeting. We do offer, certain other municipalities have liked to, they like to know when they have a leak or something in their municipality. We have provided them with electronic notifications anytime that there's a leak running in their system. So, if that'd be something you guys would be interested in, we can absolutely provide that service. Anderson Township is the first one we did that with and they really like having that just to be able to put that out there on their Facebook page or whatever.
I think it would be a great idea. Thank you.
And when you have that problem with the water, who absorbs the water bill?
So, that's kind of built into our cost of services study that we do every single year. We account for a certain amount of water to be lost.
Okay.
To run a water utility, we have to flush water a lot of times just out onto the ground. We have to maintain system level chlorine and at certain points of the system, the chlorine can get low where there's not people consuming it regularly. So, we have to flush those parts. We're out monitoring the chlorine at hundreds of locations every single day.
If I understood your question, though, does the resident get charged for that flushing?
It's built into that. Everyone pays that evenly through, that's how we build that cost into...
Like an insurance policy.
It is.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I have one more question.
Yep.
The last one on my list. Any chance you can replace that really old line before we do our...
I did not get an answer for you. It's the 16-inch main that runs from Winton and Sharon down to just before Damon.
Right.
For some reason, we didn't go all the way through. I did not get a response, but I will respond to you when I get one.
Please, please, please.
Our asset management, our asset management team, I did ask them, they were looking into it for us.
Okay, thank you so much. And that's a 16-inch pipe?
It is a 16-inch pipe.
Well, that's even bigger than Smart Man app, okay.
So, we got 16-inch pipe. It runs from the tank and pressure valve system up there at Lincolnshire on Winton Road and that comes down into the village. We also have another regulator that's at Springdale and Golf View. That's the secondary regulator. It doesn't usually run, so most of the water comes from up there at Lincolnshire.
All right, no other questions? Thanks a lot for coming out.
I will forward, I had a presentation put together for you guys. I will forward it to her if you guys would be interested in seeing that.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for coming.
Have a good night. Okay, Fire Chief Tony Spade?
Chief, I may, President of the auxiliary, actually has something to give you. Joan, would you please approach that podium here? She has something for the turkey raffle.
Thank you.
$100.
Thank you very much.
Not a lot.
Very little bit helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
I'm not matching that.
All right.
We have another check coming in with the commander, but he has not been able to make it here today. Instead of that, thank you coming for the next month.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hey.
I had on my note here to thank the Commander Compton for the $4,000 that we got last month. So, again, I want to thank the Legion for supporting us and I feel like we should be donating to them instead of them donating to us, but we're thankful for that support. I'll share some numbers with you this evening. Through yesterday, we made 68 runs so far this month, but we had five today. So, these numbers I'm sharing are through yesterday. So, 68 runs, which is 23 ahead of last year, or 51% increase in runs. This year, we had 48 EMS details and mutual aid was utilized five times. Last year, we had 29 EMS details and mutual aid was used nine times. So, we went from 31% usage of mutual aid down to 10, so that's a 21% improvement. So, we're continuing to see the kinds of results that we all had hoped that we would have since starting the part-time program. I will mention too that again, this month so far, we've had four instances where we've had concurrent EMS runs. So, that makes about a dozen times so far this year that we've had EMS runs that occurred two at the same time that we've had to handle. So, I think last year, that happened like four times in the whole year. So, that's really an unusual anomaly that I wanted to call out. So far, we have given mutual aid 12 times and we've received mutual aid 15 times as a total. Our fire average response time last year was, I'm sorry, was 5.38 minutes. Our average response time on EMS is four minutes and then our average response time during staffed hours is 4.25. So, on the fire side, when we're in the house, we're about a minute faster on average. On the EMS side, last year, our total average response time was 6.52 minutes. And again, I'll remind everyone that response time is dispatch until the first unit gets on the scene. Was 6.52. Our total response time last year, or this year, was four minutes total for 2.52 minutes improvement or 39%. If you look at it a little deeper during, that's total, 24 hours a day. If you look at it a little deeper during the staffed hours, which again, I'll remind everyone, is eight in the morning until midnight, our EMS average response time is three minutes from dispatched to on scene versus 6.52. That's a three and a half minute or 54% improvement. So, again, quantifies the results that you get during those part-time staffed hours. So, really proud of that and I'm certain we'll see those things continue. Of note, we responded to two working, of all the fire runs we've had so far this month, we've had two working fires. We assisted Forest Park on 10-8 with a house fire and then on 10-24, we assisted Springfield Township with a working structure fire. If you look at, again, like I said, if you count the five runs we've had today so far, we've had 53 EMS runs in the month, 21 fire runs for a total of 74 runs for the month. That's a record for us over the last three years. We haven't had a month where we've had that many runs and it's not over yet. We've got four more days to go. So, the demand for service continues to grow. Just a couple of notes, we'll be out this Friday. I'm sure it'll be mentioned at some point with Halloween, trick or treat is from 6:00 to 8:00 and we'll have our personnel and our apparatus out there handing out candy and helping the police keep an eye on things and making sure everything's safe in the village. Hopefully, we get good weather. Also, Saturday night, it's change your clock time again, fall back an hour Saturday night. I can't believe it's already here and so please, we remind everyone to please change your smoke alarm batteries. I want to remind everyone that our open house and basket raffle again is Saturday, November 8th from 1 to 4. That's Saturday, November 8th from 1 to 4. It'll be an open house format. We'll have the apparatus out on the apron and then we'll have the basket raffle and some activities going on inside the fire station. So, we have over 50 baskets to raffle off and so that's a silent auction format and that is a, that's a major fundraiser for us. So, we invite the public to come out and take a look at the baskets and interact with the fire department and see our equipment and see what goes on in the station. Also, the turkey raffle. Most of you probably have already received these on your doorstep. If you haven't, they're coming. They're coming. This is mine. I'm handing mine out tomorrow and picking them up this weekend. So, there's 20 tickets in here. They're a buck apiece and again, we'll be giving away about 75 turkeys, which is in the form of a $25 gift card to Kroger so you can buy a turkey or whatever else it is that you would like to buy. But again, these funds help support the equipment and the things that we need to do the work in both EMS and fire. And so, it's critically important that we continue to participate in these fundraising events and then the support of the community, not only through the tax levies, but the fundraising is very, very much well needed.
If someone misses the window of the pickup, they can drop it off in the mailbox outside?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a black mailbox on the front of the firehouse right by the green door. It says turkey raffle, tickets here. Oscar empties that two or three times a day this time of year and so if that's convenient for you, we really, really appreciate that. On the subject of water, we have, every hydrant in the village has been flowed and drained. We have a handful that we need to go back and recheck, but the hydrant maintenance is 99% complete. That'll be done by Thursday. We only had two hydrants that required repair and Hanlon County, the hydrant barn will be fixing those here very, very soon. So, we have very good water in the village. We have a hydrant out of service. We've got one 300 feet this way or 300 feet that way and so we've got plenty of water. I always like to remind everyone, every once in a while, walk out into the sidewalk, walk out into the planting strip and look at your house and see if your address is visible. We have GPS units on the vehicles. Every hydrant in town has a GPS address associated to it. So, we know exactly the latitude and longitude of every single fire hydrant in this town. So, we can find the hydrants. We can find your house, but it really, really helps if your address is visible from the street. So, please make sure you do that. If someone needs assistance cleaning up a number or replacing a number, give us a call. We'll be more than happy to come out and assist. I just wanted to mention a couple of October highlights. Last Monday, we did our annual live burn training in which we take all of our personnel and our apparatus to the Corrigan Township Fire Tower, which is an absolute wonderful resource that we have. Not all parts of the country have these kind of resources where we can actually go and train with live fire and do it in a safe manner and make sure that our skills are up to snuff as far as firefighting is concerned. So, we did that last Monday. We participated in several fire prevention week activities, including at the library. We went and spent some time with the youngsters there. We've had two or three trunk or treat events, which we have attended. And then, of course, last weekend, we were at the Harvest Fest all day on Saturday. So, we're out there and staying visible. We appreciate everyone's support. If anyone has any questions or comments, I'll entertain them at this time.
I do. When you say that you guys are willing to help with the visibility of the numbers, do you mean on the house or do you mean on the curb?
On the house.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. If it's dirty or missing or someone goes down deep and gets letters and numbers and needs them, we'll be more than happy because that helps us.
Perfect.
And I know some folks don't have the ability to do that. Just give us a call, we'll be more than happy to help.
Thank you.
And Tony, if you could, I know a lot of people during Halloween like to have, some people like to have a fire and I saw one fire on a porch where you guys said, "Not a good idea. You need to get..."
Yeah, so recreational fires are permitted in the Ohio Fire Code. They just have to be at least 25 feet away from the house. You have to have an extinguishing source and it has to be done in a safe manner. And so, we did have a burn ban in the state of Ohio, you know, not too long ago. That's, has since been lifted and so if people want to have recreational fires, it's certainly permitted, but we just encourage everyone to be very, very safe with that. And yes, if we observe something unsafe going on, we'll work with the folks to get it removed or moved or extinguished.
Thank you.
Anything else?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Appreciate your support.
Keep up the good work. All right, Lisa and Ax not here, right? Okay, Jennifer Weickert, what's happening in the library?
Hello, all. Thanks for letting me come again. We always continue to do fun things. Just wanted to point out that of course, next Tuesday is the election day and the library does have resources to help support that. The polls will be open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. and we do have League of Women Voters informational flyers still, if anybody would like that. And we can also help you print out a sample ballot. So, if you want to know what your individual one looks like, we can get that off the Board of Elections website and help you so that you can prepare ahead of time. We also have a bunch of programs coming up in November, two larger history ones. Local author JT Townsend will be coming back for a discussion of the JFK assassination on Wednesday, November 5th at 6:30 p.m. And we're also going to have a volunteer from the Spring Grove Cemetery come and talk about the history of the Spring Grove Cemetery on Wednesday, November 19th at 6:30 p.m. So, they're two weeks apart. We also have something coming up on this Friday, which is of course Halloween, and we're doing some not-so-scary stories for our little folk. That's on Friday morning at 10:30 and kids ages two to six can join Ms. Amy for some not-so-scary stories and crafts and costumes are welcome. Also, we are doing a fun teen drawing contest through the month of October and it is not too late to participate. So, if you've got anyone ages 13 to 18 at home, you can go online and get a form or we have them in the library. And if you create a bookmark inspired by the theme of river roots, which encompasses the nature, transportation, history and culture of America's river communities, top three winning designs will be printed and distributed to all of our library locations and submissions must be sent through the electronic form online at chpl.org art-contest. We are also, if you all remember, Books by the Banks is our annual book festival and for the second year in a row, it will be back at the main library and it will be on Saturday, November 15th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. And that's 100-plus national, regional and local authors. There will be author panel discussions on reading, writing and publishing, all different aspects. There will be a kids' corner with all-day fun for kids with arts, crafts, storytimes and more. There will be a teen scene with all-day activities for the teens and there is a 2025 writing contest in prose and poetry in adult and teen categories. There are prizes and if you go online, you can look that up at booksbythebanks.org. We are also going to be starting a new thing at the Green Hills branch. It's just additional snack food for anybody who might, you know, after school need a snack or anything. We call it the supplemental snack program, but that's a little wordy and everything. But our library foundation helps us kind of fill in some chinks. So, if there's anybody who's a kid up to 18 who is hungry and would like to stop in for a snack after school or anything, we would love to have that. We started that today. So, that is a new resource for our community here. And then, of course, we have all of the other November programs that will be coming up, including our spice club, our classic movie club. The ones that the teens might be excited about is the Pop-Tart Flavor Fun on Wednesday, November 12th at 4:30 p.m. I have at least 10 different kinds of Pop-Tarts, so we'll vote for our favorite ones and I've had at least one person who is already counting down the days until November 12th. So, very excited about that one. We've got a family paint by sticker on Tuesday, November 18th at 6:30. So, you know those mosaics where you can like use the little dots of color to make a picture? We'll have that activity going on and just all kinds of other fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Keep up the good work.
Do you check ID for the snacks?
We do not require ID, but we will use some judgment.
Moving on, reports from municipal officials. Municipal manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of different segments. I want to start first to clear up some misstatements that are continually made on the floor of council to be sure to have proper information's out there. You may recall that we had a suggestion made that we should be using UAN system, which stands for the Uniform Accounting Network software that was developed by the state auditor to help us and the auditors know where the money is. Well, in fact, we do use UAN and we have since 2011. 2012 was our first full year. We had purchased the software in 2011. We've given out hundreds of pages of budget materials as public records and always in the upper right-hand corner, you will find UAN there. So, if you wonder if you have a UAN document, you can take a look and see that you do. And so, because of that, the village knows every penny of its revenues and expenses. They are all accounted for in the UAN and reflected in the UAN reports. It is a help to the auditors. Obviously, they developed it and we have great audits. Our finance director, Deb Heimer, she is really on top of it. Auditors have had no difficulties in following our money at all. One citizen says that we did not correct issues by the auditors. That is not true. This is all made up. You can check our audits if you want to yourself at the state auditor's website. They are all multi-year, I'm pretty sure. They go back pretty far. Any of our audits that you want to see or you can certainly contact us for a public record. We can get any audit you want to take a look at to verify what I've said. Many times on another topic, we've heard reference to a figure of more than 8 million for redevelopment bonds. This information's been provided in public records. This is the piece that was provided. And, but apparently, it's not understood because the actual figure is half as much as the figure that was quoted. It's $4,390,000 backing, dating back to 2002. Our debt was paid off and full repayments were always made timely. So, we are debt-free right now, except for a couple of copiers, I think. Another popular target is garbage. No pun intended there. I have shared the accurate garbage bid information a couple of times at council, but I'm going to put you through it again here, just in case others care to listen and try to comprehend because the inaccurate narrative never seems to change. So, I will just go through it again. That's since 2010, Green Hills has participated in a consortium of communities. And this is all for the purpose of bidding, the collection of solid waste and recycling, recycled materials. It's coordinated by an entity called the Center for Local Government, which serves local governments on a number of issues. Very helpful entity. And so, another false comment has been that this is not competitively bid, but that's not true at all. That's the purpose of the consortium. We go out to bid together to get a better price. And here is this year's bid packet. CLG at the top. The communities that are participating this with us are Loveland, Mount Helfie, Riverside, Springdale, Fairfax and of course us. So, we all went out to bid at the same time. The bids come back. We each approve our own contract and that's how that is handled. So, if you have any further questions on that, let me know. A final comment I want to make, there's really tons of things I can go into, but I really wanted to just hit the big ones. But the one that I find just so sad all the time, and that's a constant ridiculing of my staff who shows up every day and they all work hard to try to do the best they can do for this village. do for this village. And I, not only are the comments inaccurate, but I think that they are slanderous and extremely unprofessional. That's all I'll say on those items at this point in time.
Yvonne, can I get one clarification?
You sure can.
On the garbage? So when it goes out to bid like that, we get a better price, obviously, because we're coming together as a larger group.
Yes.
Then is that the fee that goes on to the water bill? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other additional fees? Or is the village paying any other?
No, that's the amount.
And that's the only amount?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And in fact, on the fees, I didn't mention that, although I have again in previous, that they provided, CLG did a comparison of other communities and the back, going back on the different years and compared the ones who, because I think they have either three or four consortiums now. And we always manage to get the best prices because our starting this time, even though it's an increase for us, is significantly less than any of them are paying right now. So we lucked out. That's also, if you remember, we just went with a two-year this time, even though we have the opportunity to expand it to five. But after two years, they're going to bid it again to see if we get anything lower for the next three years. If not, we'll take the next three years. But if we do, we'll enter into a new one. Every time we go through this, it's a competitive bid. Okay, I wanted to review our legislation that's on for tonight. All fairly simple items. The tax advance, of course, is something that we do every year at this time of the year, naming the finance director. And she, this gives her the right to ask the county to give us tax minus as soon as they possibly can. I guess it's good for something. We don't, we still just tend to get it probably like March, sometimes April. But I guess that's better than not having the advance in place. So that's the purpose of that. We have some additional assessments on certain properties. And we also have an additional supplemental that we'll go through later and can answer any questions. It's typically, at this point in time, a year-end kind of thing as we're trying to, as the finance director's trying to adjust the accounts to make sure any late expenditures or whatever, you never know what's going to happen at the end of the year, would be covered. And I imagine you might have another one in November, possibly?
Possibly, yes. This time, I did the general fund. So I'm also reviewing the other funds as well.
Okay. So just a couple more things that I wanted to mention to you. And in front of you, I gave you a copy of the recommendation from the Planning Commission. This is their, they are formally recommending to you. They have approved language related to the historic district. What this is doing is giving a little bit more detail to the review of a certificate of, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in our historic district. And clearly outlines, which is the part we really like, when applications will go before the Green Hills Planning Commission for consideration, but with the advice of our historic consultant versus her looking at them. Like if it's a very routine item that is still obviously is consistent, she would have the ability to do that rather than convening the planning commission. That's the primary thing there. So anyway, you can take a look at it. I think the next step is that it would come to, well, this puts it in council now. Typically, they would have a public hearing, but you'll have to help me with this, Jeff, because we discovered another issue that's come up in a mailer that we have to do related to the historic district. And it requires registered mail as opposed to the typical certified mail. And the difference in price is amazing. Certified letters start, I think it was either 1325 or 1375. And we're sending postcards versus $5.25 for a postcard. So we're going to amend that. Should, do you think, should they just wait on this to do it at the same time? Or what, how do you think we should handle that?
Well, the text amendment to change the registered mail versus certified mail is going to have to go to Planning Commission for its public hearing and recommendation. I need to look at the code because there is a, I think there is a timing requirement when we have to do this one that's ready for council.
Okay, I mean, we can. Just, we're going to.
I'll take a look. I'll take a look. The next step, whenever it would be, would be to have an ordinance come before council.
Gotcha.
And you will have to schedule a public hearing whenever that.
Okay. So for, we could potentially need a public hearing on this in, is it November council meeting, maybe, something like that?
I mean, I have to remember how we do it. Sometimes we'll do a first reading and at the first reading, announce when the public hearing is. And then at that second reading, have the public hearing and the second reading for, so it's available for adoption. Yeah, we'll just, we'll look at the process.
Let me know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the second item, which is also a Planning Commission item that I just wanted to make you aware of, Planning Commission will be having another public hearing this time regarding Three Beckford. If you're familiar with that, that's a span of vacant piece of property forever.
But as long as.
A long, long time. Anyway, the current owner is asking that Planning Commission consider changing. It's currently zoned for an R1 and they would like to have it into an R2. So I just want to be sure you're aware of it. Information is already on the website and was sent to people that are contiguous and within a certain area of the property. And anyway, just wanted to make you aware of it. You can pull up the info on the website, yes.
This is for our listeners. What is the difference between R1 and R2?
It is, as a matter of fact, yeah. But I can, well, R1 is basically single families, but it will permit two families with certain size lots. And then the R2 is multi-family, two-family. I'm sure you can also have single family in there. That wouldn't be an issue. Publicly owned parks and playgrounds. And then they do, there are conditional uses, but I just listed the primary uses here. All right, anyway, I really just wanted to make you aware of that. Then I do want to mention, and somebody will probably also mention it too, that we have a lot of people kind of thinking along the line, the similar lines in terms of a food drive. So we're working with a group in the public and we're excited to, we're going to do it like through New Year's, because we have so many holidays and other things that could really make a difference on what people are able to put on the table for their families. And we're going to start this weekend with a fill the cruiser here at the admin building from 9 until 12. So there's a list of what you can bring. Basically, it's anything that's not perishable, hasn't expired. Those are the biggies. Doesn't have to be refrigerated and stuff like that. So hope to see you all Saturday morning.
Is that on Facebook page?
It is now, yes.
Okay. Questions of the manager?
I do have one question, if I can. And sorry, in advance that this is redundant, but there was some information that was put out about garbage. And there was something shared, social media, you know, about something from 2012. And there was some confusion, it seemed, about why the residents were paying for garbage. And then they felt as though the village was still paying additional above and beyond that. I know that you asked, but I just wondered if you had any feedback for that or what has happened since then of why there might be some confusion.
Since 2012?
I know, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. My recollection is that was something that council, and council can jump in if you want, had to do. At that time, we had also lost a lot of sources of other funding and we, council was having to pick and choose what they could fund, what they couldn't fund, or continue to fund. And that seemed to be a logical one to put onto the water bills. Well, because then if we did, our alternative would be to set up a whole billing system and, I mean, we don't really have that capacity. Or would we want to assume it when somebody else does the same thing and could do it for us? I also think that council did hope there'd be a day when maybe they could take back that expense, but I would just say this probably isn't the time. I don't know. I mean, the economy is pretty volatile all the time, it seems now.
But that was back when the decision was made. And since then, and I know Jeff had just asked that, but since then, just for clarification, it's not, I'm not as a resident paying a bill and then the village is paying another bill.
No.
No, but we, no, we pay the bill in Water Works as they collect it, send money, whatever they collect. They may not, they may not collect enough. I don't know, Deb, if you have a sense of how, if there's a portion that never gets paid, that we foot the bill, but no, we are, so we are paying a bill, but then we are expecting that revenue to come back to us to.
There's a little difference, but yeah, I don't, didn't bring that with me tonight.
Yeah, that's okay. We can certainly put that together for.
And the biggest, biggest hit for us when we made this decision is losing the inheritance tax, which we were getting anywhere from 200,000 to 400,000 a year.
Well, inheritance tax, the local government. Local government. Was reduced and.
Tangible personal property we had just faded.
Village of Green Hills was like the Lone Ranger that was still paying for that service. So, you know, it.
Well, and the alternative is like in a number of communities, and I don't know how many have adopted it the way we do it in billing residents, but it's a lot cheaper for residents, for the village to do something like this and do a competitive bidding than, I don't know, Springfield Township, Rumkey billed residents directly for their garbage. And they used to do that in Forest Park, but I think Forest Park switched to a system similar to ours. And I don't know if the township has. But the rates were considerably higher if you had to pay Rumkey directly for your garbage.
That makes sense. And I just wanted, since it came back out, I wanted to get ahead of it and ask the question because when somebody does something like that and posts a limited amount of information from umpteen years ago, it's misleading and it doesn't have the full picture. So that's very insightful. Thank you.
I think it's good to ask if you're not sure. One thing that I remember that inheritance tax was a huge hit for us. We, I think it makes sense why it's not here anymore, but we had that hit at our scale was quite a large pill to swallow.
It was, it was about $300,000 a year.
On average. So I think it made sense and still makes sense. The other thing to keep in mind, too, is the sidewalk repair, that is a resident responsibility, but we've done quite a bit to, what level of funds have we spent on?
Well, the first full round, well, there were like five phases. Probably was about 157,000. This next one is a little bit lower that we hope to fund next year at about 126, I think, 126,000.
We're still looking at over a quarter, you know, quarter of a million dollars there that really officially is a resident responsibility on paper. But the village, because we did the trimming method where we could, has saved the residents considerable amount of money, at least those that had issues in front of their house.
So that was just another service that we decided to take on in expense? Because I actually did have a question about that because somebody was confused on when they know if it's the village's responsibility or if it's theirs.
All along, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the responsibility of the resident. But since we were doing this, we stepped up and said that we would do the trimming. Is that correct?
Yep.
If there's a bigger issue that's not driven by our trees, it is the residents' responsibility.
Thank you.
All right. Law Director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one very quick item tonight. House Bill 481 was just introduced and it really only serves to, it says expand, but it's really expand slash clarify just the executive session provisions of the Open Meeting Act. We already have that one that we sort of call the personnel reason that has all the things about employment, compensation, all that stuff. This just adds the word performance of public employees or officials. I think that's already, you can already do that under the existing one. I think this is just meant to clarify. So it was introduced, we'll continue to monitor it and see what happens.
Another one I hope you can monitor is we, Deb and I saw just a couple of days ago, and I don't remember the number, but it had to do with taxes and the, specifically the homestead exemption and the owner-occupied credit. It was, it actually came from the county.
Yes, and I have that, I have a copy of that memo that we're trying, reviewing and trying to.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we have.
It was just the first notification. And they said more was going to come about that, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Was a nice information.
Yeah, that's on the list.
Thank you.
Can you, can you be more specific so we understand? It's so vague what you're talking about.
Well, Hamilton County, the Hamilton County Administrator has issued a memo discussing, and I will, I have not read the whole thing yet. I have it. It's on my list to review. But it just discusses the impacts of, I guess it's the homestead, was it exemption or the rollback?
I wondered if it was part of the bigger one that was looking at the inside 10 mil.
Yeah, that could be. And House Bill 335 is, the House passed that. That has to do with property taxes, county budget commissions and their authority to review your levies. So it's just all related to property tax. There are a number of different pieces of legislation, all sort of connected that may relate to changes in property tax law. So we're just continuing to, every day, a different, something else happens, but yes.
Somebody wants our money.
Well, the House Bill 481, the performance, it's simply also translated into evaluations. Is that correct?
I mean, the word that they include is performance, but I assume that it could include evaluations. I think you can already go into executive session to talk about the employment of public officials or public employees. So I'm not exactly sure what the driving force was, but it was introduced, so we'll see what happens with it.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Teresa Lally.
Nothing.
Okay. Chief of Police, Jim Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. This month, our school resource officer, Susan Teparte, started, so we're excited about that. She's been deployed down to South Campus. She will be going to the community building once we bring on our next SRO. But in the meantime, he starts with us November 13th, Anthony White. We're excited about that, over a couple of weeks of training here in-house before he gets deployed, but he will cover the South Campus and then she'll move over. But in the meantime, we have her down on Farragut. So everything's going well. I know the school's been happy with it and Steve Denny, superintendent, and the whole staff's been great to work with. So we appreciate their cooperation and collaboration. I was working on my monthly newsletter, which I'm probably going to get out tomorrow sometime. And I had put in there that Sergeant Patton had reached on October 10th his 37th year here at the village. And I thought, you know, that's, that's quite commendable. So I decided to throw a Facebook post out on that, about that. And I think it was kind of taken as maybe he was, is a retirement announcement to put that on the comment, so.
That's, that's not allowed.
Yeah, he has not advised me anything about that. I just thought, you know, 37 years, that's, you know, it's a long time. So he has not indicated any kind of retirement to me, but I just wanted to put that out in case you saw the Facebook post. And I know it got a lot of shares and a lot of likes and everything else, so. I know we appreciate Sergeant and everything he does and has done for 37 years and maybe 37 more. Update on the dog incident, 345 Ingram. I did speak with the dog warden this week. The individual, the owner. The individual, the owner of the dog, has come into compliance as far as everything he needs to do for the dangerous dog ordinance. Those types of things, just so you're aware, registered as, registered and has a permit for dangerous dog. It's chipped, proper signage in the front. There's three signs in the front of the house that say dangerous dog, beware of dangerous dogs. So he's assured me he's met all the compliance things that he needs to do.
What about the fence?
He says it's in compliance.
That can't be possible. That can't be possible.
It doesn't look like it's.
It's falling, falling over.
Right, yeah, I mean, no, keep in mind this incident, don't get me wrong. I mean, yeah, I mean, they're saying he's in compliance with that and some kind of fencing. Keep in mind, this incident had nothing to do with the fence or the lattice that came out the front door. So I just want to make sure people know, especially Halloween time now and kids are going to be out, make sure your animals are secured in the residence, people. You know, fear walking around a lot of times anyway, much less now all these kids out, running around, adults, parents, et cetera. Yes, ma'am.
Chief, does he also have to be secured when he's out in the backyard? Or can he be running loose in the backyard even though it's?
No, I believe he can be running within the confines of that backyard.
So what do we do in a situation like this where possibly it doesn't meet what we think is a reasonable fence situation? Do we have any recourse?
Well, as just the regular zone, code enforcement we would, because there have been other fences with holes that. So not from the standpoint that he's a dangerous dog, but just from code, we should be able to get something done there.
Yeah, I mean, all what I can really see from the front is like the right side of the house. And it's like, almost like a lattice type. But I know he's been cooperative. I believe he had the citation we issued a court date today. I looked before I came up here. There's nothing updated as far as the outcome of, and basically that was failed to confine, the citation that he was issued. And he also got a citation from the, from the dog warden for not having the dog registered in the first place, which I know he paid out right away. As far as the aggravated robbery we had, sixty-three Cromwell, we had shortly before our last meeting that we talked about, I'm sure you heard, if not, we did make an arrest on that. I can't speak highly enough from Corporal Mathis, who came in and worked a lot on that case along with BCI, assisted us tremendously. Just a thirty thousand foot view of that, just to give you a little idea with what we're dealing with. The individual took property from the twenty-eight-year-old female victim. Shortly later, within about twelve hours, we recovered property down around Gray Street, Grossbeck area, Grossbeck Street, down Wynton Road. We recovered what we thought were her belongings that were stolen in the offense. So we submitted those right away to BCI, which they did testing on and came up with a fingerprint of a subject that had been charged and got released in July after doing seven years of aggravated robbery in prison. So being a good suspect, you know, we looked into his history a little bit more, found a traffic citation he received in a vehicle not far from around here. Ran that vehicle, found out where he lived, lived down in the city of Heritage Joke Apartments down in Oakley. So a little more investigation comes to find out they had had a couple of robberies in their parking lot, actually, matching the same description as our victim was given. So ended up getting a search warrant for the residents. Got Cincinnati on board, letting them know that, hey, you had these robberies. We believe that our suspects probably tied yours based on the MO and the description. Got together, worked collaboratively, got a search warrant for the residents, went into the residence and retrieved some of the property from our victims along with property from their victims in the robbery. So we charged him that evening on our account of aggravated robbery. And then he went to grand jury about seven days, six days after that. And the city went to grand jury and presented their cases. So they indicted him on our aggravated robbery. One indictment for aggravated robbery with the city, three robbery counts with the city, and then two weapons under disability, meaning he was in possession of a firearm, which you can't have if you're a felon. So he's looking at seven high count felonies. That's where we are with that case. And, you know, I appreciate a lot of the residents that gave, gave up some footage for vehicle footage and everything else, from ring doorbells and surveillance cameras and stuff to help us out too, so. Truly, I apologize. It's the first thing I have on here. Tyree Graves.
Thank you.
Yep, Tyree Graves. So that will kind of outline it and, you know, like I said, you can't make it up. But Heritage Joke Apartments and the city took those two robberies. And those robberies occurred, I believe, either two days before or two days after ours. But, you know, local news station went out to interview and talked to residents and they grabbed the first person in the parking lot and happens to be the actual suspect. And they went on camera and said how he moved down here from Akron because he didn't want to live in the hood anymore. Up in Akron and he's been, he's been smacked in the face with a pistol before and he don't like that. Google it, Heritage Joke Apartments, robberies, and you can, you can see it, so. I guess if they were smart, we might not have a job. But serious offense, I would still like to know, and one of the biggest questions I get is, how do you end up here and why there? And we haven't got that answer. He's admitted to the offenses, but why there? And so hopefully through some discussions and talking to him through court and stuff, we can try to find out why he showed up there at that particular time. But appreciate everybody's hard work on that. Chief mentioned Halloween, sixty-eight, please be careful, especially motorists. If you don't have to drive at that time, you know, but if you do have to, drive slowly through the village. Look out for all the kids, wear reflective clothing on the adults and children. But if you're driving, assume they don't have that on and they could dart out in front of the street in between cars. Did a couple of safety presentations this month with the library. Thank you for allowing us to do that, the fire department. We did some adults, some safety talks with them, and we did a group of kids. Hopefully some future firemen and policemen. So I'll probably be retired by the time that age group gets up here. But hopefully we, we influence them maybe to look in first responders. So definitely the fire department and safety talks and stuff went very well. We appreciate it and we appreciate you having us at the library, Jennifer. I know, I can't believe I'm the first one to say it, but it's in my newsletter, so I thought I'd bring it up. Light Up Green Hills will be right around the corner. Not too soon to be thinking about that. We'll have our cookies with the cops out there as usual. So we'll be out there with buskin cookies to have with the kids. And I know some adults grab some too, and that's fine. September stats, we're almost done with October, but September stats, we handled two hundred and one calls for service. We took nineteen criminal offense reports during the month of September. Out of those two hundred and one calls, few examples, thirty-one squad runs, two domestic trouble runs. And one of them ended up in a domestic violence arrest. We responded to seventeen suspicious persons and/or vehicles calls. We assisted fifteen mutual aids for our neighboring departments. We issued sixty traffic citations. We issued sixty-one traffic warnings. And we arrested two individuals for operating under the influence of alcohol and/or drugs. To date through September, not to date, but through January through September, we've taken a hundred and thirty-two criminal offense reports. That's compared to the hundred and forty-eight taken during that same time period last year, two thousand and four, two thousand and twenty-four. So we're down from one thirty-two, from one forty-eight to one thirty-two. We took eight crash reports during the month of September. To date, we've taken fifty-one crash reports. And that's actually up from forty-three through the same time period last year. Hopefully we have a quiet winter time and don't have a lot of accidents through the snow and we'll level back out. So that's all I have, Mayor, unless you have any questions.
Anybody question? Right, moving on. Mayor's report. I have the court receipts, which I've lost. Checks to be issued to the state of Ohio, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Hamilton County, twenty-one dollars. And the village of Green Hills, two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Also, I wanted to mention that when we do later in the meeting, the municipal calendar that we should talk about when we're planning on having the November and December meetings and decide for sure exactly what we're proposing. And then the last thing, I want to remind people, the election's coming up, be sure to vote. And the village has a renewal levy on the ballot for recreation. And it would be important to pass that and continue the programs that we have with recreation and go from that. And that's all I have. Reports of committees, finance and audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, at your place tonight is the general fund recap for the month of September. You'll be able to review the income tax, real estate tax funds that we received for the month of September. Currently, the fund balance as of the end of September was two million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. There were no additional transfers in the month of September. We do have some on the, on the agenda tonight for October, so that will be coming up. As far as expenditures, we've spent approximately forty percent of our appropriated funds for the year, calendar year two, twenty twenty-five. Unless you have any questions, I'll try not to cough through them. That'll be the end of my report.
And actually, I want to jump back to see if the finance director had anything that she wanted to add as a village official.
Oh, for the report?
Right.
No, no, not, not this time.
Make mention of the state audit that's been released?
We can. We finished our state audit and had a, a good, good review. So we just, just got the certificate from the auditor of state within, I guess, last, last week. It came out for us. So that should be on the website shortly, if not now, that it was certified. So it is available for review.
Auditor's website.
Yeah, on the auditor's.
Yes, the state auditor's website, yes.
And actually, the email I got from them said that they were putting it on there and it'd be on for a few months. I can't remember how long it's been on his site. And that's for twenty-four and twenty-three years.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, all right, jumping back. Community development, Jim's not here.
Yeah, I have a list that he wanted to mention. The winners for the twenty twenty-five Fall Bjudification Awards was eight, Damon Road, nineteen and twenty-one Burnham Street, sixty-one Gambier Circle, ninety-eight June Dale Drive. And then someone had asked for the honorable mentions. And the honorable mentions is one Alcott Lane, three Alcott Lane, nine Alcott Lane, eight Andover, twenty-one Ashby, eleven Avnell, twenty-seven Avnell, twenty-nine Avnell, thirty Avnell, thirteen Batman, fifty-two Bayham, sixty Bayham, twenty-one Beckford, twenty-two Beckford, twenty-six Beckford, eleven Brompton, nineteen Brompton, twenty-one Brompton, twenty-two Brompton, twenty-three Brompton, twenty-five Brompton, thirty-one Brompton, thirteen Burley, seven Burnham, nine Burnham, eight hundred and eighteen Carini, eight hundred and twenty-two Carini, eight hundred and twenty-six Carini, eight hundred and thirty Carini, eight hundred and thirty-four Carini, eight hundred and thirty-nine Carini, eight hundred and forty-two Carini, eight hundred and fifty Carini, thirty-two Schalmers, twenty-four Damon, twenty-five Damon, fifty-two Damon, fifty-eight Damon, seventy-three Damon, seventy-six Damon, six-day spring, twenty-five day spring, thirty day spring, seventeen Deer Hill, twenty-nine Deer Hill, one seventy-five Faragut, one eighty-three Faragut, two fifteen Faragut, two twenty-seven Faragut, one FDR Walk, three FDR Walk, eleven Gambier, fourteen Gambier, sixteen Gambier, fifty-two Gambier, fifty-three Hadley, fifty-four Hadley, seventy Hadley, ten thousand four hundred and ninety-three Hadley and sixteen Handle Lane, fifty-eight Handle, eighteen Imbler, three hundred and fifty-six Ingram, eighteen Ireland, fifty-seven Ireland, sixty-one Ireland, two thirty-two Ireland, fourteen Joywood, one thirty-seven Yulip, one seventeen June Dale, twenty-two June Field, forty-one June Field, one thousand eight Ligorio and one thousand twelve Ligorio. And for, for the record, whoever wants to keep that, Mr. Burner, want to make sure that all of that was covered. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving on, services and streets, Melanie Armies.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that the leaf collection is currently going on. That is one pass per week. Make sure it is only leaf at the curb, but on the curb. It is going to be going on through the first week in December. In addition, we will have a streets and services meeting on Tuesday, December ninth, at approximately six o'clock after the safety meeting. That's it.
Recreation, cable television, Rachel Hudson. Oh, safety, sorry.
It'll be brief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Steve Predmore from Waterworks coming out. It's really helpful to hear from them. We've had, you know, we've been back and forth trying to make sure that they get out and look at the Wynton Road situation. And it's good that they at least send a representative to update us. I'd like to recommend that if you are not signed up for one call, that you call the village and get on that list. Because I think that information like this, and maybe we could put this out there, about getting that five one three, five nine one, seven seven zero zero from Waterworks, getting on their notification system, just like for Duke. It's very helpful to know, you know, quickly whether there's a water line break or with the power, if the power's out, you know, you know, you can start to plan and see if you need to do anything about moving something from a freezer or what have you. So we'll, we'll pick that up on our next meeting. And as Melanie mentioned, our next safety meeting is December ninth at five thirty PM. And that concludes my report.
Thanks. All right, now recreation, cable TV, Rachel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be quick, but before I go, I wanted to ask, Avon, do you want to talk about Harvest Fest? I unfortunately was not able to go because we decided that it'd be better if I stay at home because my daughter had hand, foot and mouth, so, since I couldn't be there at last minute.
Okay, I, I think it went really well. And others who were there, feel free to chime in. Fortunately, the weather held out for us.
There was a good range of vendors.
I did, I did pass and it looked like there were more vendors than last year.
There were. This was possibly the most we've had.
Okay, good.
It was a good variety too.
Good, good.
And the ones we spoke with, they'd say they were handling a good amount of sales, so that's really huge. But yeah, I think it went really well. We had one issue with one of the food trucks. They were supposed to show up by two. I think it was more like three or three-thirty when they showed up. And then they left early, so that was a little bit aggravating, but that's okay. The burger place had great burgers. And I think AK Sweets did a really good job. Anytime I passed there, they were like lined out the doors.
Awesome, okay.
Hopefully she had a great day.
Yeah.
And the kids had a good time, I think.
With the kids, the laser tag.
Chief and I had the hardest job, judging the pumpkin car.
Yeah, I guess you did.
And I had a report from a kid that was both. And I had a report from a kid that was both to our festival and the one down in the township, and he said that we did a better job, at least entertaining him.
Okay, we'll take it. We'll take it, okay. And I know there were some dog adoptions, too, and everything, so that's awesome.
Yes, which is really good, very nice.
In regards to the vendors, did the newer vendors say, you know, how they found out about Harvest Fest, or do you?
No, actually, we could probably put a survey out to them.
Yeah.
A quick survey to find out.
Curious, yeah, okay. And yes, I haven't, we don't have anything scheduled right now. I haven't spoken to Dana, but I do know that they are always looking for volunteers for all the events. I know it's going to be concert time, and obviously, the sports are changing, so I would encourage you to reach out to them. And they never discriminate. As long as you can work a camera, which they are more than capable to teach you, they will take you. And also with the food drive, just encouraged by that, there has been, this election season has been exhausting, and it's been a, and I'm not even running, and it's been a rollercoaster of emotions, especially online. Some of it, you just can't help but laugh. But what was really encouraging is that there has maintained, there's a lot of rhetoric that's out there that serves as a distraction and negativity, but there are so many conversations going on behind the scenes that are so encouraging, that are not someone trying to be manipulative or angry or whatever, and just for people to go outside of their comfort zone, go across party lines, as if we even have those issues locally, and to be able to step in and do something. And so there's a group that's come together that are organizing a food drive, and then when they reached out to the village about having a donation location, Avon was already on it. So another thing, and you know I've told you about this, that, you know, it's easy for people to say negative stuff and not see the positive, so I just wanted to say that was another thing that was nice, to see that you were already there, already being mindful, already taking action. And there are people that are online through the village page that are residents, that have been on either side and have asked questions, but again, are coming together for the greater good of the community, which is what we should all be worried about at the end of the day. So looking forward to that and seeing some good results.
Just a quick fact, is the Phil the Cruiser the same food drive, or is there two separate?
No, no, we're going to work together.
Okay, great.
Yeah, smarter, not harder.
And so reminder, Saturday, right, 9:00 to 10:00?
Yes, yes, so Saturday, Phil the Cruiser, here at the administration building, from 9:00 AM to noon.
And I had a comment on the Harvest Fest. It was successful in part because the hard work that Brenda and Mary and the service department guys put in on it, plus some other volunteers that helped out with everything, and the police department that did their share.
Oh, well, I'm going to piggyback off that and also say thanks to Courtney and Sat because they help with flyers and stuff, too, and bringing people there. And they have, what, over 90,000 reach or something on social media, which is crazy. So yeah, it was teamwork makes the dream work for sure.
Okay, all right, in the governmental affairs laws and rules, Maria Walther.
I'm going to tentatively say that we're going to have a meeting on 11/11 unless Mr. Berner decides to do it in December. He's not present, so we work together on the two committees. So if he changes his mind, we're just going to put tentatively on 11/11. I also want to remind everybody that 11/11, we're going to have a ceremony from the veterans of the Hugh Watson Post. They are fully staffed, we're having everybody that will be present there on that day. Also, on that day after that ceremony, we are to go to opening the grounds, so to speak, for the Veterans Memorial Path on the new area that park there. I have been working to get Senator Blessing to be there. I give him all the information, it's on the calendar. He offers very graciously to have a commendation for doing that, and we're looking forward to that. 11/11, at 11/11. So it's going to be exactly at that time and that particular date. I have the back piper already in line to come for that. And please, please, for the veterans that have signed all their life, whatever it is, their blank check to the United States of America for our safety, for our liberties, I would like to have a really good show of people there for them. It was not only them that signed their lives to the blank check, but they also put us collateral, their families, their kids, their parents, everybody else. And this is a good time to all of us to show up and give thanks. I also wanted to encourage some of the activities going on for that opening of the grounds. I have the shovels already. I want to make sure that, I have them, so if whoever wants to pick it up, I have them at home. My suggestion is to have loose dirt, so no one has a problem with the back doing that. It's a kind of a show thing for breaking of the ground that most people do when you have citizens of the age of wisdom. And we also, I have communicated at one time with Dana, and she said that it's not going to be a problem because they will have somebody taping for the veterans, the scores and the firing, the 21 Gun Salute and all that, and it would be not a problem for moving the camera for the ceremony at the Veterans Memorial Path. So that also should be in the makings at the same time without any problems. As soon as I hear from Mr. Berner, I will solidify the date. I know that is a holiday, but we have, we can have a committee meeting, I assume, during that date. If not, we'll just move for December. So that's what I wasn't sure, if that was the correct date to have committee meetings or not. And that's my report.
Okay, all right. This is an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely on legislation listed on the agenda for this session of council. And recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you are a resident or a non-resident, and state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes.
Don't have any specific questions regarding your resolutions, other than the fact that I'm just wondering, who is it that composes the resolutions, and how do they actually make it before council? Do these come from committees, or how does a resolution take form? I'm also wondering, are these proposed resolutions and ordinances actually posted on the website available to the public?
You need to address what's on.
That's, I'm wanting to know. I'm wanting to know, are these things on the website? I did find the 2024 ordinances available on the website, and I noticed one of them from May of 2024 that indicated that there was a tree assessment.
Pat, if you're not going to comment directly on what's coming up.
I'm talking about how you, sir.
That's not, you need.
You need to keep the quorum, sir.
Take your seat.
Okay.
Take your seat.
The other thing that was brought up was historic planning recommendations. I'd like a copy of that.
You're out of order.
That particular thing that you referenced. It's indicated that the historic planning recommendations, that they need to have training.
Okay.
Apparently, that was commented on earlier, and we need people, all these committees that are actually trained.
You have a chance later to bring those things up.
Right.
Thank you.
And those things were all referenced in your meeting, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, can I speak now?
No, it's just on what we're going to be voting on, on the legislation that's pending.
Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. Good evening. I'd like to talk a little about the resolutions being voted on tonight. I've been at past council meetings and work sessions, so I've witnessed you all discussing these resolutions and why you introduced them. Because the council meetings are videotaped, citizens who do not attend them in person have the option to view them later on Waycross. However, without recording these work sessions, where there's also been discussion about these resolutions, you are putting yourself at a disadvantage, because those who didn't attend the work sessions have no way of knowing everything that has been discussed about these resolutions, which involve money, and how it's being spent. If you are a member of the Village of Green Hills Neighborhood Group Facebook page, you've probably seen there is a growing interest in your decisions about these resolutions and more. Without recording these work sessions, those who do not attend have no way of ever knowing what you have discussed and decided on. And I think we can all agree that this puts council members in particular at tremendous disadvantage for justifying and defending your decisions on social media or anywhere else.
You have a specific question on one of these resolutions? If not, then?
I just continue to ask, well, this is the second time I've asked, even if you can only record the audio of the work sessions.
That's not related to the question at that point.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. First resolution number 2025-R22-F, requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2026 pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2025-R22-F, resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2026 pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code allows a taxing authority to request advance payment from the county auditor funds derived from taxes or other sources to the county treasurer, which may be held on account of a location subdivision. Now, therefore, be resolved by the council of Village Green Hills, Ohio, that Section 1, the auditor and the treasurer of Hamilton County, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 321.3134, be required to draw and pay to the Village of Green Hills upon written request of the Finance Director, Deborah Heimer, to the county auditor, funds due in any settlement of 2026 derived from taxes and other sources payable to the county treasurer to the account of the Village of Green Hills and lawfully applicable for purposes of the current fiscal year. Section 2, that the clerk of council of the Village of Green Hills be and hereby is directed to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
This is something that we just have to do at the end of every year to make sure that the funds that are collected on our behalf by the county are paid to the Village of Green Hills.
And of course, the county makes interest on holding these funds as long as possible.
Of course they do.
And sometimes they're a little later in doing the big distribution, so it allows us to have an early partial until they can get the main distribution to us.
Right. Clerk poll the council.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Hudson.
Aye.
Ms. Walther.
Aye.
Mr. Halter.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2025-R22-F passes. Okay, the next resolution, number 2025-R23-SNS, resolution authorizing the assessment on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Two more.
That's me. Thank you. Resolution number 2025-R23-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas the owners of said property did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the village council hereby certifies that the costs of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and placed as a lien against the properties by the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Partial number 597-0060-0212, address 76 Drummond Street. Owner, Michael Gregory &amp; Shelby, Jean Saul. Cost $334.17. Section 2, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section 3, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
Has this particular property come up before on this list? Has it not?
Probably.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and most of this, what we just did with the last resolution and this resolution, are administrative functions, but in order to carry it through either to the county, and in this case, to the county to collect the taxes of the assessment on the property, council has to agree to this. Clerk poll the council.
Ms. Hudson.
Aye.
Mr. Halter.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Walther.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2025-R23-SNS passes. Next resolution, number 2025-R24-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2025-R24-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Whereas the 2025 annual appropriations that were adopted on December 14, 2024 are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations. of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2025. The following items of expenditures are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2025. Fund description. General fund, lighting. Account number 1,000.130. Original appropriation: $45,000. Change: $5,000 for a new total of $50,000. General fund planning, account number 1,000.410. The original appropriation is $37,000. The change additional $10,000, now a new total of $47,000. Account, general fund refuge, account number 1,000.563. The initial appropriation was $300,000. The change is $5,000, so a new total of $305,000. General fund finance, account number 1,000.725. The original appropriation was $182,000. The change is $10,000 to a new total of $192,000. General fund lands and buildings, account number 1,000.730. The original appropriation was $626,000. The change is an additional $25,000. New total is $651,000. General fund solicitor, 1,000, account 1,000.750. Original appropriation was $40,000. Change is $10,000 for a new total of $50,000. Section 2, that the following transfer of funds to be made from previously appropriated monies, none. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
I had a discussion earlier with Deb about these. These are just basically when we make the appropriations early in the year, there are costs, additional costs that come in at the end of the year. This just makes sure that we have everything covered for year end.
Keeps the auditor happy.
Keeps everybody happy.
Clerk poll the council.
Ms. Walther.
Aye.
Ms. Hudson.
Aye.
Mr. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Hermes.
Aye.
Mr. Halter.
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2025-R24-F passes. Next item, your council comments. Any council people have any comments to make? All right.
Be safe on Halloween.
Right, yes. And the municipal calendar, Halloween, Friday night, the 31st.
From 6 to 8.
Fall back Saturday evening into Sunday.
That's good.
Especially if you watch the baseball. Safety, December 9th, 5:30.
Streets and services, December 9th, 6 o'clock.
And November 8th, the open house, our department open house, 8 to 4, was it?
1:04.
1:04. 1:04.
And we have the food drive.
The Saturday, Phila Cruiser from 9 to noon here. And first Friday, December 5th, the tree lighting. I'm just kidding.
Already. Community Development and Intergovernmental Affairs, laws and rules, typically for 11:11 at 5:30.
And the 11:11 ceremony.
And the ceremony at the shadow.
Shadow pole.
Yep.
Okay, and so the plan is to have, it's on our schedule, the November regular council meeting on the 25th, is that correct?
Correct. And the work session.
The work session on the 11th.
Which is that Wednesday.
Right.
All right, and then in December, we have it on the schedule of the calendar for the 16th for the regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. And the work session on the 9th.
And the work session on the 9th.
Right.
All right. Okay, all right. Opportunity for residents now to appear before council. This is time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, complete the sign-in sheet, verbally indicate if you're a resident or a non-resident, and state your comments. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for a response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Now I know why I'm only attending every two years. Okay. I'll wait till you all get your little copy. I love Green Hills. Two years ago, my sweet little darling cat got killed in front of my house from a car ripping through Bachman Street. Everything about Green Hills I love, except the speeding on Bachman. And I am a regular speeder. I speed all the time on the highways, but never in a residential area. So, my little letter. My goal tonight is simple, to make Bachman Street safer for our children, seniors, pets, animals, and everyone who lives here. Bachman Street is a cut-through route connecting north and south Burley. It's a cut-through. Recently, a speed study was conducted quietly, without public awareness, for 12 days in August and September. The results claimed only four vehicles exceeded 30 miles an hour in the 12 days, and one vehicle exceeded 40. I can tell you with confidence that these results do not reflect the reality we witness daily. I have evidence that the study is deeply flawed and does not represent the constant speeding and close calls happening on our street. We have had serious, even deadly incidents, and far too many near misses. There is a little to no police enforcement, as officers are understandably focused on Winton Road. Meanwhile, Bachman residents are left unprotected. I am here to formally request the installation of speed humps on Bachman Street. They are essential for safety and will prevent the next tragedy. I am even willing to personally contribute $4,000 or more toward the installation of speed humps. That's how strongly I believe this is necessary. The argument that emergency vehicles will be impeded does not hold up. Many neighboring communities have successfully implemented speed humps without issue. It's time to act before something worse happens. Let's protect the people and the pets. In the last couple months, I ordered this radar gun. They put a radar gun or a radar thing up on Bachman Street. Like I said, it only recorded one vehicle going over 40. That's not true. It's so false. I have the report right here from the speed thing. Anyway, I bought this a couple months ago, and I returned it. I bought it again. I still, it came open, but I haven't taken it out of the package. I need to have some enforcement on Bachman Street for speeding. That's it, speed humps. I'll give you $4,000. I don't know how much a speed hump is.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, your four minutes.
Our time is up?
Yeah. And the device that's mounted, the device that's mounted on the pole that records the speed is calibrated. So, that's what it's saying.
Okay, so I'll take it out of the package, and I'll do my, I'll calibrate it, and I know that you're going a lot faster than 30 and 40.
And just another thing is, this will be a point of discussion. Because when you say, is that it? Well, we're trying to hear the issues, and then we're not making this a big discussion at this point, but it doesn't mean it's not going to be discussed.
Okay, all right, well...
And it will fall on Jeff.
Safety committee.
Yes, safety committee.
He's the guy.
It'll be on the topic for December 9th.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if I was supposed to talk tonight or another.
You talk anytime you feel ready.
I'll see you in two years. Thank you very much.
Or December 9th. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Everybody got two different ones?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Monique Mason-Halter, Green Hills resident. As I've mentioned at previous meetings, federal bills are being rushed through that will eliminate municipal control over cell tower and wireless facilities installation. And the Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, also wants to eliminate municipal control over wireless and wireline infrastructure permitting. I've provided you with printouts before, and I am again tonight. Tonight's printouts are about the FCC's proposed rulemaking docket number 25-276. Each handout has different websites where you can take action. One provides instructions on filing a comment on the FCC docket. Sample comments are provided if you don't know what to write. The other allows you to send pre-written emails to lawmakers and FCC commissioners. I'm going to read select excerpts from each. From Americans for Responsible Technology, "Don't let the FCC take away your authority. Preserve local control." "Congress gave local officials the authority to control the deployment of wireless infrastructure in their communities. Now the FCC is trying to take that away. Telecoms are tired of local zoning laws that restrict their ability to put their wireless towers and antennas anywhere they want. Now the telecoms and the FCC want to strip away the control that Congress gave exclusively to local officials, despite the fact that municipal leaders know their communities best and were elected to protect and preserve the values of their constituents." The website includes directions on how to file comments at the docket and provide sample comments. From Children's Health Defense, "FCC moves to silence communities and flood the country with cell towers. Here's what the proposed rules mean for your community. Silence is your community's voice. Public hearings would disappear, conditional and special use permits would vanish, and elected officials would be powerless. Decisions about your community would be made in Washington, DC, not where you live. Automatic tower approval after 150 days. The FCC calls local review, quote, 'unreasonable delays.' If your city doesn't rubber stamp a tower application in time, it's approved automatically, even if there's opposition. No independent review. The FCC wants to bar localities from hiring their own experts to test radiation safety. Instead, the industry would police itself, and communities would be forced to take their word for it. Lose existing protections. The FCC wants to force towers in quiet neighborhoods, et cetera. And your neighborhood will have no power to stop it. Threatens property rights and local budgets. The FCC wants to strip communities of their ability to cover the true costs of oversight or protect property values. Families could see their homes lose value overnight with no compensation and no recourse." So that's that. Again, thank you for writing a letter to the FCC and asking them to comply with the 2021 court order to update the RF wireless radiation guidelines that haven't been updated since 1996, where there weren't nearly as many cell towers. In addition to taking action at the websites I've provided, I again encourage you to contact our federal lawmakers' offices directly and ask them to take action to preserve local authority. Senators Houston, Moreno, and Congressman Davidson. Of course, if you're okay with losing local authority, then obviously I'd prefer that you not contact them and tell them that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, thanks.
Now, is this a time that you won't be interrupting? Is that how this works? Is it only when we have the resolution questions? Am I free to speak?
Yes.
I'm free to speak?
You have four minutes.
But you're not going to interrupt.
Your clock started.
Good evening. Here's an oath that each of you took that is kind of a general oath for the state of Ohio, and it reads, "Every officer and employee of the village shall, before entering upon his duties, take and subscribe to the following oath of affirmation, which shall be filed and kept in the office of the clerk of ports. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Ohio, and will obey the laws thereof, and that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of this village. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of council upon which I'm about to enter." Won't be too long, I might be reciting that, but I have some issues. One, we have a whole raft of charter amendments that need to be addressed to modify the revised Republican-leaning ordinance that adopted the charter under your Charter Review Commission in 2013. I brought this chart up during the Waycross video, when it shows our population in the Village of Green Hills. Since 1974, when Mayor Moore came on board, we've dropped over 40% in terms of population. So obviously, something's not going too right in this town. Now, I've expressed before my concern about the form of government. We've got something labeled as mayor, council, manager. And according to probably the best wishes of David Moore, 34 years wasn't enough of him running the show. He had to tack on another 10 as a mayor, and now he wants to tack on another four. I'm sorry, we're tired of it. You were supposed to adopt at your January 2025 meeting the rules of council, and you were supposed to elect a pro temp mayor. That didn't happen. You guys, the most basic thing that you're supposed to do in January, you didn't perform. It was not in the minutes. You did not do it. The fact that you don't have email addresses on your website that... on your website that are complete email addresses for the council, and you only have pictures of some of the council members with their phone, fax, and so forth, it needs to be consistent. If you're going to have people representing, there should be a picture of that person, how to contact them, a phone number, where they live. I'm amazed that you're going to have a food collection after I already launched one, but that's fine, because MAGA has cut SNAP benefits across the board for all the citizens in the United States. I'm having a collection at my home, and I've invited over 1,500 residents to come to my home, if they're available, and to drop off canned goods so that we can have a talk about what they want to see. What do people actually want to see in this village? You haven't been delivering, and I think it's time the people spoke up. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? All right, well, I guess that's it. I will make one comment, and say one, that I will be here another four years. As long as my wife votes for me, I'll be elected mayor, since nobody is creating any opposition. Right. Also, I'll make one other comment before you leave. You posted something, according to my wife, on a webpage blaming me for an action that happened in 2011, and I was not involved in the village at that time.
No, that's right. I know how.
So get your facts straight.
I know exactly.
Meeting adjourned.